Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Curtin?
Here.
Mrs. Ebert?
Here.
Mrs. Marburger?
Here.
Mr. Mellon?
Here.
Mr. Andrew?
Here. It's okay, at this time if there's any visitors that would like to speak before the board, you can say anything, give us your name and topic, or they'll let you continue on. All right, we'll continue on with communication.
Yeah, one of the things I want to communicate with the board tonight, we have a layout of, I'm going to show you a picture of what room 140 in STEM Lab is going to look like this evening. We'll have two labs at the high school, one will be a research lab, and the second lab is the one that we've put together in the final design phases here in terms of what we're putting in. So, if you remember the junior high, this is a much bigger room than the junior high STEM lab that we have. So, over here, you'll remember as you went and you took the tour of the Z space, we'll have 16 Z space here, virtual reality will be here. We've been able to, Mr. Kootsman and his crew have been able to reuse furniture that we had previously to make this horseshoe in this. You remember those walls that we have, the painted walls? There'll be two of these in this classroom with interactive walls, okay? So that there can be opportunities for students there. This'll be work benches, and then of course you have your work area for our high school students with this. And then there will be additional technology over here, okay? So that shows you the layout of the room. The research will actually take place in Mrs. Van Uren's room, but this has really turned into a nice learning space for technology for that situation. It'll also be convenient because of some of the equipment we have here. We're going to bus eighth grade students from Taylorville Junior High School over here to access some technology during the day to use some of the equipment to enhance Project Lead the Way for the engineering program and the medical sciences program at Taylorville Junior High. So, this is what it's going to look like. The equipment has been ordered, furniture has been ordered to have this room. Once this room is fully operational, we have staff and students get a grasp of the room. Then we're going to host an open house for the public to come see Taylorville High School STEM Lab. So, as you can see, this thing has come together quite nicely. It will be great opportunities for our kids at Taylorville High School and our staff. Yes, Jim?
3D printers?
Yeah, 3D printers will be there as well. So, and then with virtual reality, how many do we have, Mr. Kootsman?
Eight.
Eight. The junior high currently has?
Three.
Three. Okay, so whatever our junior high students are experiencing, they'll definitely come over because the classes are a little bit bigger. Z spaces, 16 Z space will accommodate 32 students in a classroom setting that they can share Z space. And then, this is your think tank areas where teachers, there could be multiple classes in here doing different types of thought process. But I wanted to show you that as this has all come together for the STEM lab. You want to add anything, Mr. Kootsman, or not?
No, kind of the bottom right corner there, that little white space, there's actually going to be a rack right there with the 3D printers. So we'll have eight 3D printers on a rack, so they don't take up nearly as much space because they just print all day long. And then we'll also have a couple 3D printers on carts, so if a teacher wants to do a special project, they can take that cart into the classroom and 3D print from the classroom.
So this is really, really a showcase of Taylorville High School and the opportunities that our kids, all kids are going to have, the opportunity to have access to this facility, which will be really nice to have. I just mentioned this, I showed you this, it's in its final stages and it's ready to go as soon as equipment starts arriving. Everything's been poured down in there, new furniture, this furniture, existing furniture is set, we're doing some painting, and then do the floors, and then we're ready to go, okay? And while I'm talking about communications then, on the technology piece, this is Taylorville High School and Memorial Elementary. There will be a STEM cart for each floor, so that has...
The 3D printer on a cart, and we'll also have the Google Expeditions. So it's a case of 30 virtual reality headsets, so the students can sit at their desk, and the teacher can take them to the pyramids, to the outer space, to the mountains, wherever, and she kind of is able to control what the students see.
So that will be, and then we have Littlebits as well, at Memorial Elementary for our elementary students. And then at the fifth and sixth grade, they'll also have expanded virtual opportunities for those students as well. In addition, we're working in the library at Taylorville Junior High School to set up a maker space. Do you want to talk a little bit about that too? You didn't know you were talking.
The maker space is just a space where kids can make anything. Robotics is kind of what we're pushing towards, a lot of the Project Lead the Way with the engineering piece of it allows the kids to build from different materials, cardboard, you know, any type of cardboard material, string, stuff like that, so the kids can have a space that they can spread out and build different things, so we're starting that process.
So, another exciting opportunity here, and then expanding at our elementary program and expanding at the junior high program, so these are things that will be great opportunities for students, so I share that with you.
You know? All right, that's communication, we can sign the agenda. Everybody got a chance to look over the minutes? Anybody have any changes they saw? What did we talk about? Okay. Are you just going to re-add?
No, I'll take care of that now. Okay. So the closed minutes in your packet, the administration recommends that the minutes from January 16, 2018, February 12, 2018, February 28, 2018, March 12, 2018, March 21st, 2018, April 9th, 2018, and May 14th, as well as June 11th for those minutes. The administration recommends the minutes from January 16, 2018, March 12, 2018, March 24th, 18, April 9th, 18, May 14th, 18 remain closed. The administration recommends that February 12th, February 20th, and June 11th can be open.
Okay. Is that February 20th or 28th? Because I didn't see 20 in the packet.
Oh, it should have been...
12th and the 20th, okay. 28. We just need to make sure that's...
Yep.
28.
28.
Okay. All right. Consideration of the coffee details from closed.
Yep.
That's, we just do that for law.
Okay.
Move on to claims, any questions or comments or regularities anybody saw? All right, okay. Treasurers report.
Yeah, as I indicated, the auditors are here. They'll be here for two weeks, and they're going through the materials that they've requested, so that's underway, that's a good thing. We closed their books in a positive way, and we're already starting the budget for next year. We're in a whole lot better place than we've been in years past in terms of having funding from the state, knowing what our state sources are going to be, our state sources, as well as our local sources. So Mrs. German and I will be putting together this month, towards the end of the month is our goal, to have a ten-year budget for the August board meeting for you to take a look at. So, we're in the process of doing that. All reports have been submitted to the state in reference to our claims, that being title grant, that being only child lead block, that being transportation claims. So, we're in summer mode and getting that done.
All right, you got the new personnel?
Yes, everybody has a personnel sheet. It's not two or however many pages we had last month, okay, so that's a good thing. So this month we have resignation, Sarah Sorrell, student council, Jill Velcelka, preschool teacher, Washington School, painter. We have retirements, Gloria Cooper, who was a four-hour cafeteria worker at Taylorville Junior High School, Mary Lee Dome, secretary, North Elementary School, effective August 3rd. Change of assignment, Lori Euler, secretary, Stonington Elementary School to secretary, North Elementary School. Peggy Coffey, secretary, North Elementary School to secretary, Stonington Elementary School. Shannon Morrison, 5.5 cafeteria to lead cafeteria at Stonington Elementary. Amanda Harlow, 5.5 Memorial to 5.75, Taylorville Junior High School. Connie Beeman, three-hour junior high to a four-hour cafeteria at Taylorville Junior High. Jacob Koniac, social studies teacher, Taylorville High School to technology integration specialist. And then recommendation to employ, we have Jody Marty, preschool teacher, Washington School, painter, bachelor's plus zero, four years of experience. Max Wilson, social studies, Taylorville High School, bachelor's, zero, Eastern Illinois University, zero years of experience. Laura Hubbard, third grade teacher, Memorial Elementary, bachelor's plus zero, four years of experience, is to be hired, recommended to be hired.
Any questions on personnel? All right, I'd like the administration to accept the consent agenda. Mr. McDonald, second. Ms. Marburger, go call.
Mr. Curtin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebert?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger?
Yes.
Mrs. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Mellon?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to old business, separating the board policy. Yes, nothing more often than I actually needed other than approve the policies just presented. Motion to approve policy. Turners, second. Mr. Curtin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebert?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger?
Yes.
Mrs. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Mellon?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew?
Yes. All right, new business, consideration of support staff evaluation.
Yes, in your packet there is a, we have worked with our support staff, see Jonathan here, the IEA director, in putting together an evaluation for our support staff, we've tailored one for secretaries, custodians, and food service folks. So this is that evaluation. It accounts for the probationary employees, as you remember, we have 120 days probation period of any new hire in the support staff, and the evaluation will take place there at that point in time. So, we feel good about this evaluation, it'll be one that will come in handy in terms of helping the administration and the support staff as well. So, we do have their blessing on this as well as we work together on it. We're asking that you approve this this evening to be implemented this year.
Motion to approve. Mr. Mellon, second.
Second.
Sorry.
Mr. Curtin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebert?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger?
Yes.
Mrs. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Mellon?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew?
Yes.
All right, consideration of resolution for allowing inter-fund transfers.
This is an annual resolution that we present each year to the board that allows for, if necessary, that allows the inter-fund transfers for the education fund, building fund, transportation, and working cash fund, which are our operating funds, so that money can flow if needed between funds. And then it is also paid back to that said fund that the transfer was done at that point in time. We've not done this or had to do this, but it is a precautionary situation in the event that something happens, and this is something that the auditor does look for if that does happen, that the board has a preemptive resolution for this fiscal year.
Doesn't necessarily mean we're going to need to borrow money, but we have the option if it's available.
Yep.
Now, motion to accept the resolution. Mrs. Ebert, second. Mr. Mellon, go call.
I've got a question. Is this what allows us, if we get in the problem with our transportation fund again, that we can move that money back?
That's correct.
Do that do that?
Do that do that?
Yeah. Does this just keeps us, makes it legal?
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Curtin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebert?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger?
Yes.
Mrs. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Mellon?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew?
Yes.
Consideration of paper bid for 2018.
Yeah, included in the agenda is the paper bid. You see that the, both the 17, 18 paper bid as well as the 18, 19 paper bid, and the total cost of the bid is $17,744. It's an increase of $6,131. We typically will, in some years, have more paper, therefore we don't, we'll use that supply, and then we come back the next year if we have to order more paper. So some years are cheaper, some years are more expensive, just depending upon where that's at. And then she also noted that not all the companies provided the samples requested, which nullifies their bid.
Motion to accept the paper bid. Ms. McDonald, second. Mrs. Ebert?
Yes.
Mr. Curtin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebert?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger?
Yes.
Mrs. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Mellon?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew?
Yes.
All right, consideration of the Taylorville High School boiler project change order.
Yeah, we have a change order on that project. Inside of the boilers, there was a gasket that was hidden, a hidden gasket that had to be evaded, okay, before they could take it out, okay, of the boilers. So, we need to approve the change order. It was handled, it's been removed, gone. Change order's for $12,000, but it's within the contract, but we need to approve it in order to have that evaded.
Motion to accept. Second. Mellon? Go call.
Was that a unit price in the contract?
Yes, it was a unit price in the contract, yes.
Mr. Curtin?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebert?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger?
Yes.
Mrs. Mellon?
Yes.
Mr. Mellon?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew?
Yes. We'll move on to the elementary lunch program.
Mrs. German will get that, I got to get caught.
Okay, we don't have a lot to go over here, just wanted to kind of show you where we ended up with CEP. So, the last time we looked at this, our projections were at $34,495, and we ended up at $35,280 per year. Those were our results of the increase from the prior year. And that was almost entirely due to paid students now participating on the program. So the growth was completely due to the increase in yields. We didn't change any, anything we offered, that was completely what the growth was due to, and that allowed us to offset the costs of some repairs and some equipment we had to buy this year, so. It's really all that happened.
And they don't really like you to carry money in food service, but the nice thing about this is we were able to replace the refrigerator at North and replace some steamers or...
We had all the repairs, they were going to replace some stuff this next year.
Yeah, we're in the process of doing that, but we did purchase a new refrigerator for North, which was the original refrigerator. So, this money helps, the additional money helps us offset our equipment costs, which is good. You can see the difference of that, we were thinking projecting a negative...
Yeah, the worst-case scenario was, I think, $25,000 or less? I can't remember for sure, but that was if we had no program changes, so you could see how much...
You can see the difference from a negative 25 to a $35,000 gain, okay, for that. So, it'll be interesting to see when we bring the junior high, 5'8", onto that program next year.
Yeah.
In terms of, we will be CEP, K-8, we're all junior high and high school students, free breakfast and lunch, so we'll see where, and you saw the projections on that, but...
Yeah, and that junior high actually brings our percentage down a little bit, but we're doing a lot of things next year to try and increase the participation in addition to just the paid students now, you know, and increase in the new meals, so.
With the K4 program, I'm not, I'm not too concerned about the junior high program in terms of that.
And then if the junior high program takes off the same way this does, then we'll look forward to seeing what we can do at the high school, which is a lot harder.
Yeah, we'll look at that, but they really do bring our percentage down.
I understand, but I mean...
But we definitely have that to the next step.
We can't make money, but we get to where we're making money.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that'll be what we consider when we look at the big business based on equipment needs, or could we offset the junior high, or the high school in terms of that. So, once we have probably a semester under our belt, you know, next January, January, we can take a look at that, because we will basically have several months of that to look at.
I really think it's amazing that we've been able to do, we'll be doing K-12 for everybody, breakfast and lunch, that's...
So, we just wanted to give an update.
They should eat your mom and dad. Just send them up the door.
Yep. It's their choice, right? If they want to eat, they eat, if they don't, so be it. But, you know, it's what it is, right? All right, so any ones who bring that one in?
Yeah, we're there. We're at the consideration of the elementary attendance centers, so everybody had information on ahead of time, so that we'll have a chance to look it over, and we'll show the presentations, and we'll be open for...
Go to... No, go to the one that shows where, how many kids live.
Go to the, go to the big, there.
This is going to be the context of our discussion tonight. We've taken, we used last year's enrollment numbers because we had their addresses in Skyward. We took every K, well, back, these are K4 students, and I will get into the arrangements in a minute. But this is every K4 student in the Taylorville School District where they live. That's a fact. Came right out of Skyward, put into a map. You can see the density is here, which is Taylorville, okay? You have Mount Auburn, it's all broke out, this is the lake, Wanaco, Stonington, and Old Stonington. So that's the context of the presentation tonight, is the population, where it's at, okay? Now go to the slide that has the total numbers in each subdivision real quick. This is why we're having this conversation, because, and I'm going to start this right here with this number called 72. Because this is what's driving the discussion, and has been driving discussions, is this 72 number is just the Stonington boundary. Only 72 students reside within that Stonington area. I bring this to a point because when the district elected to chew, close Mount Auburn, Mount Auburn had 77 students in it at that point in time. And that was K5 at that point when Mount Auburn was closed. So that is, this has been a number that the administration has been watching. 12 years ago, Stonington had close to 130, 140 kids. You can see where it is right now. It's not growing, nor is Taylorville essentially either. But it's not growing, and the school's been there for 12 years, so, in terms of that. So, now you can go back to the other slides, but that's going to be our premise tonight. That's been the whole, the whole topic of discussion as we started these processes. So, let's take a look at some projected enrollments, and I'm going to use projected in kindergarten because I don't know who's showing yet. We had pre-registration numbers. You can see we're projecting 140 at North. We know we're going to have 141 first graders if they all come back, there may be some move-ins, move-outs. And then second grade at 137, there'll be six sections, class size is 23, not too bad. We've had as high as 28, 26 at some point in time. This is Stonington as we know it now. 11 kindergartners, 13 first graders and 13 second graders, okay? Where did those students come from? They came from within the Stonington boundary that I showed you, because we are not busing anybody from the lake, Lincoln Trail, Mount Auburn, or any of those students. These are actual Stonington students, okay? Go ahead, go. If you were to have one K2, I put this up as a scenario so you could see what that would look like. Seven sections, class size is a 22. Could be smaller, could be bigger, just depends, but we're not projecting, but close, based to, on the kindergarten numbers. So that's what, I just put that up there, if this is what we had, that's what it'd be projected. Now you can go to Memorial, go. This is Memorial next year. 136 third, 22 class size, seventh, or fourth grade is our largest class, but you can see what's happening here. You're starting to see smaller class sizes coming up. This is the last of the big push right here, again, unless we see a population influx. We're going to be running right around that 150 mark as we move forward. So, these are numbers that you have to look at when you look at enrollment projections and how you're going to fill buildings, because that is the most, that's what drives your discussion. So, after next year, our K4s will definitely be smaller than what they are now, close to about 40 kids after next year. Close to about forty kids after next year. If, if the math holds, or unless we have a population boom either in Taylorville or Stonington or Mount Auburn, this is what we're going to have, right? Going forward with this. And this matches our birth. We calculate, we predict kindergarten class. We have a cohort ratio of predicting kindergarten classes of births in Christian County. We know that the Taylorville Public Schools get roughly about forty-six percent of all the births in Christian County. Remember, Christian County contains Pena, Edinburgh, South Fork, or Kincaid, right? And I don't count the private schools, because I don't get those kids. So, we have a cohort of predicting our kindergarten enrollments, and it's pretty close, depending upon, depending upon those kids. So, we do have a standard to predict enrollments. It's been used for the past ten years, and it's been fairly accurate in terms of that. So, that's, that's where we're at there. This was the enrollment at the end of the year. Eighteen preschoolers in Stonington. Next year's projected enrollment, who's registered is eleven students. Now, remember Cornerstone, Chrismont, the transition changes, because not all of those kids will be back there at the start of the year. So, you can see Cornerstone, which is the special education component of it, the ED component of it, had twenty-two students. Those students will remain pretty consistent there. The transition in the Chrismont School changes. Those numbers could change, because some students will be going back to Taylorville High School, and some will be coming back to the junior high, right? So, these are numbers. We don't know that until we actually set the course for that. So, that shows you where those numbers are.
And those change through the year, too.
Yes, that's correct. Now, this is your population density right here. So, one of the questions was asked, how about K fives? There's not enough classrooms for K fives. When South went offline, that, that was the end of the K fives. You just don't have enough space for your K fives, for your fifth-grade classrooms. Memorial does not have enough classroom space to handle the number of fifth graders that we currently have, in terms of that. You're going to see that Memorial is going to bear the brunt of the enrollment, just due to the nature of where people live in Taylorville. So, that's how we've taken this and broke this out, in terms of that. So, when we take a look at this density map, then we have to pick and choose. If we look at K fours, where do you draw your attendance boundaries and where are you going to draw your kids? Okay? That's really what it, what it boils down to. You have to look at where are you going to set your boundaries and how are you going to do it? So, go ahead, Cole. So, these are the numbers we're looking at. The Mount Auburn area, which we basically took a lot of the old Mount Auburn section, there's thirty-seven students that we can pull from for K fours out of Mount Auburn. Okay, currently, those students go to North and Memorial. Okay? And then, if you take a look at the Stonington area, it has seventy-two students. But you come down here, you come down forty-eight, this is basically the same roadmap that we used in, when we had K five centers, when we closed West, and when we closed Mount Auburn. We're basically drawing in from the lake, and then Lincoln Trail, and just to the tip of forty-eight, we'll give you a hundred and five students in those, in those areas. And that includes Wanaco. So, that boundary, then, if you take a look at that boundary, that produces a hundred and seventy-seven students. Okay? The reason why somebody asked why these kids aren't part of this is because of bus riding. This is a long ride from here to here. I can put these on other buses and run to Memorial, through the country.
Mainly because of the lake.
Because of the lake. So, if you draw the line, and what we did is that east of Cherokee, south, west of Cherokee, south, Hewitt Bu, and west of Cherokee, south, outside of town makes up the Memorial boundaries. Three hundred and twenty-one students at Memorial. Then North, which is the green area, basically includes east of Cherokee, west of Cherokee, north in town, and west of Cherokee, north outside of town. We tried to use roads as actual lead lines that we can operate, because when you start to set boundaries, you need roads, in terms of that. And we've been down that road before. And it's going to be pretty important, if this is the direction that we go, that we need to understand where we're going to draw the lines in Taylorville, because eventually you will have to move into Taylorville deeper to support enrollment loss and those types of things, right? It's fact. We've been through this before with boundaries, right? Okay.
And that's the hardest part with the boundaries, is every year, the boundaries can change to get the students the rights. So, none of the parents will actually know where their kids are going to school till after registration.
Yeah, we'll get to boundaries in a minute here. But these students here are tuition students, okay? So, their parents provide transportation. Okay. All right, go ahead. All right, so, in a perfect world, we had X amount of K four students divided by three, perfect world, right? We'd have two hundred and sixty-one students in each building, right? Perfect world. To have a perfectly balanced boundary. But, as I said, if we take this boundary here and this boundary, it's two hundred and fourteen students for the Stonington Elementary Building. These are your class sizes, based on the numbers that we have of actual students. Two sections. Those are the, those are the numbers. Okay? We go to North, which is this area. They have two hundred and forty-nine students. We're going to have to have three sections of first grade, because it's fifty-seven students, to get nineteen. Then we come down to Memorial. Three sections of kindergarten, three sections of third, and three sections of fourth. It all adds up when you look at the number of sections. We have seven sections. Some buildings just have more. We're utilizing that classroom space at Memorial right now. Same number of classrooms. But here's our issue, and I'm going to have the principals talk a little bit about this too, with the boundaries, right? So, with Memorial's boundary, you can see, as you look at the population density right in here, so conceivably, to balance class sizes, you move the line, right? You think that, well, yeah, you just move the road. Doesn't necessarily equate to balance class sizes, but you got to know where they live in order to do that. And you do that when you register kids. And in the old days, we registered elementary students at South, at West, at North, and at Memorial. Now, Stonington and Mount Auburn weren't part of this. They never had to be involved in this equation. The elementary principals, the day after registration, we didn't post class lists. We didn't post anything, because the elementary principals had to go through all of the rosters and count the number of students, and determine how many students were at a building. And then they had to make phone calls to parents, telling them that your child can't go to the school that you reside in. Okay? And I'm going to have Mrs. Gancy and Mrs. Brewley and can talk a little bit about making those phone calls and those decisions. And it gets down to this, and we had this happen, that Memorial was full because of this, and this, because that's before we went to the K five. So, Memorial was drawing a lot of this in, as well as North. We had students that moved in during the year, right on Adam Street, that couldn't go to Memorial, because Memorial was full. And we had to tell the parents they had to go to South or West, depending upon who had, who had empty classroom, or not empty classrooms, but room for students to do that. Now, we don't have that to the degree that we had back then, because we were having classes at around two fifty, two sixty, coming through at that point in time. So, go ahead, Mrs. Gancy.
I mean, basically, Dr. Firstman said, we would, we would register, and then either the next day or the following day, depending on how many we had no show, we had to try and determine, say, for instance, there were years, I'd stay at the building on the registration day till, and so did the other principals that were working with me at the time, till nine or ten o'clock, trying to locate the no-shows. And so, you had to determine, you know, if you had kids in, in the upper grades, not kindergarten necessarily, but the upper grades, that were on vacation and just didn't register. So, we'd make all those phone calls, and then we'd do what was called the numbers meeting, and we would just basically put up just like this, that would show exactly who we knew was coming back to us. And we had years, I think the, the worst year that I had, I had twenty-nine in my kindergartens, both my kindergartens, and I can't remember if it was West or South, had around sixteen or seventeen. And so, in order to get the classes closer in size, first of all, for best practices in teaching kids, but also as part of the teacher contract in balancing classes, then I'd have to start making phone calls. At the same time, that year, I had twenty-nine in my kindergartens. My fourth grades were at like nineteen, and West's were at twenty-nine. So, then I was telling parents, well, your kindergarten's going to have to go to West, but your fourth grader can either stay at my building or go to West with that child. So, it just wasn't, it wasn't, and it happened every single year. You know, my, my assessment was, I think what's so tough about it is families, and I've seen it, I'm fifty-seven, I'll just tell you, I have children every year in my third and fourth grade that have moved more times in their lives than I have in fifty-seven years. Families just, you know, my family's lived in the same house. They just don't do that anymore. I think families are much more fluid in their movements, and so, it, it just kind of creates this balancing act. And I can assure you, no parent wants to be told eight days before kindergarten starting, your child can't go to the school you've been driving past all summer and saying, that's where you're going to go, honey? Or coming over and playing on the playground, and then have to say, well, now you're not going to go there. And, and there really isn't, you know, we talked when, back when Mr. Hicksonball was our assistant superintendent, what's the fair way? What's the fair way to determine, okay, if I have to call twelve families, what twelve do I call? Now, as a principal, I'm thinking, okay, the twelve aren't rich. No, that's not fair. The, the twelve furthest away from Memorial. Well, that's not fair either. And so, it basically came down to, you know, kind of a, just randomly pulling was the only fair way. And, and otherwise, it looked like we were targeting neighborhoods, and that wasn't fair either. So, it was definitely a, a three or four-day period that I dreaded, and I think the families dreaded even more so, waiting to hear my voice on the phone, so. And I know other schools are dealing with it as well. My daughter-in-law teaches in Chatham. They're dealing with the exact same thing. They have K fours, and they're dealing with the exact same thing. Even in that district, you know, the families just don't stay in the same place for any length of time, so their three elementaries are dealing with the same thing. Nineteen in one kindergarten, and, you know, thirty-two in another, so.
You have to draw your lines as your enrollment decreases, because you've got to be able to continue to balance, balance student numbers to, to make that work, in terms of that. Mrs. Brewley, you want to add anything to that?
No, I just remember having a union issue one time, where I kept what was deemed as North, and they got wind that someone else had smaller class sizes. And I had to walk them through that about, I don't feel like calling these parents and telling these five students they have to move. Do you want to call them? It became, it became an issue with that, indeed. It was, that was a problem for me.
Because that ultimately could have, you know, we can set boundaries wherever you want to set the boundaries, and you could have more moves, right? We don't know who moves in Taylorville in the summer. And it is pretty moving, you know, they could move from here to here, which is pretty, pretty typical with, with moves. The transportation piece of this, if you look at this, we're running buses out here anyway to town. It would be just like we did in the past, with that really no additional transportation. We have the buses out here. They're out here bringing kids into Taylorville anyway, on these, on these, out here in these areas anyway. And we have buses down here right now. So, the transportation end of it really isn't, you know, a boat-a-boat. We've done it before. We just rerouted the buses. Instead of coming into Taylorville, the elementary buses then went to Stonington, on the back road in May Township. They'd come on the other side of, the north side of Burton Eddie and just jump down. And then there were kids out here, out here in this area, and they'd just loop it, in terms of doing the transportation piece. So, transportation's not, I mean, not a real issue in terms of doing that. It's the boundaries that become the issue with where you set, where you set boundaries. And notifying these folks again of a move has to, has to happen again, too, if that, if that is indeed the case that we have. And that's what we did prior to that. We sent letters to those parents saying on the lake side that you're now going to go to Stonington, in, in that situation.
We did mine, too. That was back when we had budget constraints. We were trying to save money, and that was before the ref-...
And we were running K fives at that point in time. We did that because of the enrollments. We did that because of the enrollments. You know, the crazy thing is, back then, twelve years ago, the junior high had three grades with the number that it takes four grades to make right now. Taylorville High School was almost eleven hundred students. We're eight hundred students now. You know, we're not making these numbers up. This is fact. These are projections. We've known this was going to happen for a while. That's part of what we do up here at the unit office, is track enrollments. Track things. Why? Because it affects budgets. And ultimately, that's the situation, to be able to provide the best education to students, right? That's, that's what we do. And we knew this number was coming. And that's why the discussions had started even a couple of years ago, that when it reaches this point, there's going to have to be a discussion about what are we going to do about that? So, it isn't like, and that was the systematic approach with Mount Auburn, with West, and with Stony, or with South. You know, I bring up the point, yeah, it should be nice to be running eight buildings right now. Well, guess what? Can't afford it. You can't afford it because of that. Number one, you'd have empty buildings, right? And you'd have maintenance concerns and other issues, right? All right. Okay. I put this up there, because I've talked with the building principals. If we're going to do this, we're going to do it right, because that's fair to kids and fair to staff. So, that's our total staffing for next... So that's our total staffing for next year. Forty-seven at the K4s, okay? Thirty-four classroom teachers, two and a half administrators, one art teacher, one and a half music teachers, two PE teachers, four title teachers, two nurses for a total of 47. Well, if you're gonna do this right, you're gonna have three administrators, you're gonna have the same number of teachers, you're gonna add an art teacher, you're going to add a half music teacher, which ultimately will be a full music teacher because how do you get a half? You're gonna add a PE teacher, you're gonna add a title teacher, you're gonna add a nurse. Because of all the needs of our students that we currently have, there needs to be a nurse in every building. It's an increase of five. If you take a look at that, if we were to hire the staff in first year with bachelors only, the additional cost would be $284,038 with benefits. That's an added cost if that's, if you wanna do it right. These are the actual costs that will be audited, um, that, that have been audited in terms of the cost for each of the elementary centers that we currently have. That is a breakdown of all of the costs. This is the area, the upper areas are staff salary and professional services. You have that anyway. Okay? But this is the area right here that could be perceived savings. You would not be paying utilities on the building. Now you ask yourself, "Why is the Stonington utilities higher? I can't buy gas or electricity, I have to buy it from the village of Stonington. I hedge gas and buy hedge electricity on every Taylorville school." Which has saved the district thousands and thousands of dollars over the 12-year period. I can't, I can't hedge. I'm locked on those costs and I'm not saying, that's just what it is.
How much is Winston paying without utilities?
Huh?
How much is Winston cornerstone paying without utilities?
That's off of the rent, that is in exchange for, for pupil tuition seat. Yep, yep.
So there's not an exact dollar amount that they're paying?
No. There is a seat cost reduction, which I share with you. But this is, this is a fixed cost. So that in essence could be potential savings back into the educational program. You can see the differential. I had Mrs. German break this out by cost per pupil. When you wanna look at it mathematically, it's the way you look at it. You got X amount of students, X amount of staff, total cost per pupil as it is right now. The more pupils you put in here, the less that cost is. Okay. And I have Mr. Walters here tonight to talk about the immediate concerns. We welded the Stonington boiler the last time, correct, Mr. Walters?
Yes, we just had a, we had a major, it's 1950 boiler and we spoke about this before in previous meetings. It's a 1950 boiler. Uh, it runs it, you know, throughout the winter months at, at full bore, it has to. Uh, the building is, uh, we, we've done several research, uh, projects on it. The way the building is piped, it is just too hard to separate the building into individual heating. Yes, there are some different areas that have some rooftop units that stand alone. But we had the welder, our welder there just a couple of weeks ago and he said, "If it lasts this year, you are lucky." If it lasts this year. Uh, it's got 587 gallons of water in it, uh, running at five pounds of steam, uh, at 212 degrees, that's a lot of pressure. And it's, it's, it's done that every day of its life and there's not enough metal. He said, "You can take a hammer on the bottom of the boiler and after a few hits, you're gonna, you know, start putting holes in it." So we did have that welded to get us by as well as the condensate tank. It had the same issues. They have original equipment from uh, when that 1950 boiler was put in. Um, so we've got, I think, we've got the total cost here of a 4.1. These things have, the roofing um, has not been touched in several years. There's still the old rock roofing. And you can add that, excuse me, with the asbestos abatement. The roof is full of asbestos. So that would have to be completely abated in order to do the roof project. Uh, the control system, this is a control system that everyone in town, including the courthouse, had at one time. A couple of years ago, our, our high school went corrupt and we had to change that system. The courthouse has went corrupt. Uh, the guy that invented this is a Kennedy, out of Kennedy, not, he's out, not out there. He's ninety-seven years old and he lives in North Carolina. He was the only one left to work on it. Uh, and there is no repair of it. So right now, the Stonington heating control system is corrupt. So it's not going to function other than stand alone. So there's not any turning up, turning down. It's, it's gonna be basically this, this year, it is what it is. You put all those together and, and we've got 4.15, uh, five million dollars that has to be done basically now. That's getting prices as right now. I mean, we know we've got some increases. You can probably, if that's done within a year from now, you can definitely add 10 to 15% onto that because of increased things that are gonna be happening throughout the, the industries.
The, uh, the problem with the original boiler in Stonington is that it's been encapsulated.
Correct.
So there's gonna have to be a separate boiler room built. Can't use the existing boiler room. You can't get a new boiler in there. We were fortunate at Taylorville High School, when we replaced boilers, we had the old coal room. So we opened up the coal room and we ran the boilers through there, but we also have a mechanism in there now where we're running the flue in the vents that it can, and the indeed that in 30 years from now, when those boilers need to come out of there and they can go out that backside of the building. That's been engineered to handle that. Really, the point is, is this. When you, when you look at the total picture of the building, the only thing that Stonington had done to it was back in, in 2004, was the library addition. There was nothing else done except tear the old high school down at Stonington. The original heating system remained intact. We air-conditioned the facility with Mitsubishi units uh, with that situation and then, because in that grand, Taylorville High School was completely remodeled as well as Memorial Elementary School with that. So, and then, um, at that point in time, until the sales tax passed, we really didn't have really any maintained facilities. We were struggling maintaining facilities. At that point in time, we elected to air-condition and retro North Elementary completely with a window replacement, lighting replacement, air conditioning replacement at North Elementary. The junior high was retroed with air conditioning and, um, a new control system as well. The control system gets expensive. There really, if you look at the Stonington, Stonington facility cannot have the Dyken system. There's no false ceiling in Stonington. So whatever we do, it has to be, it's different. It can't have what the junior high, North Central School has. It's not equipped for that with the roof or the ceiling inside of it. Um, so that control system has to be dispersed throughout the building, okay? And the boiler room has to be reconstructed and then refitted in terms of that. Can be done, but again, it's a costly project, as we know at Taylorville.
Percentage is the first two items are on east end of the building and west end of the building?
The roof is pretty bad all over the building.
The only new roof, as Dr. Firstman just said, is above the library and on the four classroom addition. That's the only new roof on the entire building.
Yeah.
But what would that cost be if you only did the east end, Steve?
The east end as far as where the classrooms are at.
From the, from the library on east?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that, that number.
We just have the entire roof.
The entire roof.
But here's your problem. What are you gonna do? Let the other side fill up with water?
Fill up with water, yeah.
And mold?
Do we have anything now with water and mold or?
It, the roof is, the roof is leaking. Yeah.
So nothing's been done, done in 14 years on the roof?
Cool.
So other buildings got it, but Stonington, when you went to look for new boilers and those kinds of things, Stonington received nothing?
Where are the majority of the kids?
I'm just asking.
We're just asking a question.
I'm just, I'm answering, right, in terms of where things are at.
Stonington received none of those upgrades that the other schools did.
No.
Correct, okay.
But Stonington got a new classroom addition as well as the library. No, I'm just saying that, that the decision was based on, based on the population. We closed South to keep North running and the junior high running. We had to cannibalize it. We took West, we took Mount Auburn and West to use in other facilities. We had to at that point in time. You know, the thing is, and, and you know, we talk about this, but this district had four days' worth of cash on hand 12 years ago in a, in a red ed fund and a building fund that had no money. That, 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 that's fact, you know? So the board had to make the best decisions that they had to make.
Part of it is, part of the sales tax, correct, in the past, we were paying a little bit. And even, and even after the sales tax, then it became a priority. Priority became North at that time, Memorial at that time, because that's where the popular kids were at. And that was the most more silverstone. Here was the, we were ignoring Stonington. It was just, we were prioritizing and even with the sales tax, it's really had so much going.
At, at, at that time, we also had to take an insurance settlement off of South. The junior high, any of you, if you were at the junior high, was leaking like a sieve. And we had no way to fix it. So we got an insurance settlement, the rest of the settlement off a mine subsidence at South, and that's what re-roofed the junior high. We took a settlement to fix that roof because it was really in bad, bad shape um, at that point in time. That's what we had to do. And then we put a 10-year roof on, on South at that point in time because it was leaking like a sieve um, at that point. So we took that settlement and, and we, we put that in there, uh, you know, on the, on the, on the situation. So I think that, you know, that's, that's where we're at. So that's why, you know, the board did what it had to do.
A lot of this work was even talked about at Stonington facility back four or five years ago. But again, it was priority as far as other buildings. Um, and that was when we had more kids in Stonington facility too. And the focus was to do, we had to do long range for that facility. Now, what's happening in Stonington?
And future needs, which is the same in the other buildings in Taylorville. The junior high still has a window project left. About half of the windows at the junior high are original, lighting, ceiling tile and floor tile, which is in every building that we have. You know, those are just needs that, that we have within our, within our facilities, right? And Steve got a number today.
Got a number on the combined. If you take the top 4.15 and you're gonna do the future needs as needed, you're gonna add about another, and you're also on that, not necessarily missing, but anytime you do that scope of work, you're gonna, uh, create the ADA to come in. And so that means all the bathrooms are gonna have to be updated, uh, to make them handicap accessible. So the bottom number.
Are you not, now with the faces program there?
No.
So how do we have?
Getting your grandfather in.
We use, yeah, we're grandfathered in because there hasn't been any construction, but we also u- utilized some facilities.
You're talking indoor baiting. I'm just, I'm just giving numbers. I'm just telling you the facts and numbers. I'm not here to give you whatever. But you had about another eight million on the bottom number. So a total combined would be about 13 million if you added the future needs to the immediate needs.
Which is, the catch 22 that we were in was, at the time, everybody else needed such repairs, Stonington was the best building and didn't need repairs. As we were fixing this, it's degradating, now it needs repairs.
Some of those 14 years, it's they're, 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 that much.
Yes.
Now.
What's a new springs a leak? You've got a map.
We, we, we re-tubed the boiler and we, we did the things that we had to do to get it going. When we did air-condition the other classes, we did put the Mitsubishi units into the Stonington classrooms so that all those classrooms had air conditioning as well. That was a decision that was made. So, uh, we could be able to do that as well, um, to do that. You know, it's just that, it's just what was done, um, through, through discussions and other planning. In, you know, in all fairness, this number drives. I mean, it's, it's, it's enrollments. That's what drives it.
Could I ask another question? Colleen, can you go back to where it was staffing? That question, do we currently have, um, two full-time nurses?
Have what?
Yes.
We do.
We have one at North and we have one at Memorial.
Full-time. And so then, there's not a full-time in Stonington and she comes in once a week, correct?
Yep.
So you're saying if we move those students to Stonington, we have to?
Well, you have an increase in population.
You should. You should. It would be a better, better environment for kids that may have issues, right? That may have asthma, that may have, um, other needs, IDs, uh, diabetics, those types of things.
Everyday medicine.
Sure.
Now, you don't have to do this, could you go back to the old way? Yeah. Um, you know, in terms of that, it could, um, do that.
But on the same token, if you, if you leave that, that's not fair to students to have one set of students not having all those practices and the other ones have.
I just wanna make sure, we currently have two full-time nurses now for the rest of Memorial.
Yes, we do. Yep. That's my feeling.
I can reiterate on the utilities real quick, just to give you some numbers. This is just a winter month of last year and I'm gonna use Mr. Hudson's building. Uh, it's our, you know, a winter month is $15,000 for the high school, the entire complex of high school. It's just typical January, I think this was actually January. And if you, you know, you really can't base that on per student, but if you had 750 students, uh, that's, that's $20 per student in that month of utilities. Uh, Stonington, the same month was $15,000.
Is that village?
Or excuse me, Stonington was, yeah, with their utilities, that was the water, that was $10,000. I'm sorry, the high school is $15,000. $10,000 with the combined utilities, all of them, all of them. If you take that divided by the 60 students that are there, you know, 30 we have and the 30 they meant to have or whatever, that's $166 per student for utilities in one month. So we're using close, and we're using much more per student than the actual high school bill to give us as far as utilities right now on, on a given day, excuse me, wintertime.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna open the floor up to discussion on, on, uh,
Yeah, right.
On this topic that everybody needs to talk on and clarify. Want, anybody wanna start anywhere?
I definitely, I'm a proponent of K4. I, I just acted and I have had kids go through K4. I've had grandkids go one K through four, K through three now, and one at 10 minutes centers. And my feeling is for your tax dollars, you get the best, best education you get in the world. I hate to see the Stonington building, I think it's an asset and I agree with Mike, or Steve. Several years ago, it was the best asset that we had in the school district and we have let it absolutely degrade.
Because of lack of funding.
Lack of funding. But you also have to remember, when you look at that map and how away you wanna go, your tax dollars, us poor farmers that I just paid yesterday, today. What percentage? Yeah, you better pay by tomorrow. You know, you're, you're looking at your landowners out there that are paying a hefty, hefty percentage of those property taxes according to the school system versus someone that's maybe a single home here in Taylorville. You know what I'm saying? You have to acknowledge where, where your funding's coming from too. And I realize your largest portion of media students are in the central part of Taylorville. I do realize that. But I just, I like the K4 concept, I really do. At all our schools. I'm not just stopping.
Well, the discussion today is if we're, if it's doing it, all of the schools. Well, the discussion today is if we're, if it's doing it, all of the schools will be okay. Or the.
I don't know nothing.
Because you can't, with the busing and everything else, there's no way you could keep just Stonington a center and everything else be.
Everything has to K through four.
There's no way it can work, you know? So, the, the discussion is, are we, you know, looking to put the whole district back that way? Or are we looking to, you know, put the district?
Attendant centers like everything else, you know, a new idea comes out and everybody has to try it. And we've tried it and there's been success, but I still believe for your tax dollar, your best investment is in K through four.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you for your tax dollars, your total cost per pupil in the centers are forty-five hundred to fifty-one hundred. And the center is eleven thousand three.
Sure.
So, your dollars.
But if you, if you, if you move those students into where you have a hundred, you know, two hundred students.
It's gonna come down, it's not gonna come down enough to set off six thousand dollars worth of difference. Comes down to four ninety-four per student compared to two thirty-two and three seventy-eight. I think, here's, from all the discussions that I've had, I think we all wanna get to K through four. Our problem is we don't agree on the location, we don't agree on the mechanism. We also have, and go back to the dollars, that fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers. The referendum, I understand who's paying the majority of that money, I get that. But that referendum is more about curriculum than buildings. It wasn't about buildings, it was about programs, it was about band. It was about art, it was about getting STEM labs started and building a school district where we're doing things that other districts around us aren't. We pay more for teachers than Chatham does, and that's why Chatham has their problem. We do more for our students than Chatham came and bought our junk. They came and bought our computer junk. I mean, it's good stuff, you ain't got anything, yeah, it's better, I mean, that's okay. Well, we passed the administration, I did, I wasn't here, but the board passed the administration twelve years, this is his own foundation, a solid financial foundation. And through our curriculum. And they've done that. Have made everybody happy, but you don't need to do that. Thing I see, my biggest problem with this, I hate closing buildings. I hated to see, I hate to see Hook Street closed, I have a lot of fond memories there. I hated to see Westco because I could stand in my daughter's house and watch the kids play. The fact is, student population drove us to that process and getting back to, we're sitting at what, a hundred and twenty-eight, a hundred and twenty-nine days of working capital right now? Why do you need that much money? Because when we go out to get bonds, we get a heck of a lot better rate, and we protect the taxpayers' money and we offset it with the sales tax. We manage the money. So, anybody that goes into bankruptcy, they can tell you, you got to manage your money. Give me your credit cards. The board has done that. Actually, they've handed us a pretty nice ride right now. But what we can't do, I keep going back, is we cannot do, just because we're getting finance, in a financial situation and we've got the referendum passed and that, we can't pull a Ryan. Can't come into the state of Illinois when you got a whole lot of money in the treasury and say, hey, I can be a nice guy, now I make everybody happy, start giving money away you didn't have. Put the state in a hole and hand it to a couple other guys that couldn't manage and look what we got. We manage our money locally better than the state government does. We cannot go crazy on that process. I, my vision to get to K through four, and I'm a big component of that, is that we have to take a couple steps over the next five years, four years, five years. Where are our bonds paid off? Two, two thousand and one.
Twenty-three.
Aren't we at a point in school year twenty twenty-one that we'd be able to go out and get more bonds?
That is correct.
Now, I know everybody doesn't like the location of where North is at, that's the land we got. Wouldn't it be nice to have a big complex out there by the high school? Absolutely, but somebody turned that down back in nineteen ninety-three when that was proposed? We're at the eight, we're not gonna go out there and, we're not gonna abandon the schools we got and go out there and build. So, what, for six million? Can we put enough classrooms at North to have K through four? And updated classrooms, high-tech? Can do that for six million bucks? Close, close. Move up fourteen rooms in there, maybe more? If we do that, then we can utilize that building even more. And Memorial, now, I, I'm saying you step through this process, you take Memorial and you turn that into our Minta facilities? It's perfect for that. Maybe we move the board back in there and build a new boardroom or something and do that in that area. You get Minta and, uh, Crismont in that area, you put our, uh, alternative adult education in there, that's a perfect building for that. They don't need a playground, they don't get to go outside. They don't need a parking lot because they can't drive to school. And it utilizes that building, which is on a historic register, we're not gonna do anything to that building. And we, but we have to go through the steps of the process. And that means we gotta exist with the centers for a while. We gotta get the best bang for our buck so that retain, we continue to get retained earnings to grow, so we'll get the best bang for our buck when we go for the bonds. I might, and I might be wrong. That's where I see the vision, to do the best job for the taxpayers and the students in the long run. We gotta put up with a couple of things in between, that's, I'm done, that's, I ran it too long. Actually, that was the board's perception when this all started, was to, uh, to, to move in that direction, to make it the most feasible economically, which isn't always what you need to do.
That was part of the design of the, but of the gentle North was being able to put that classroom space on.
But, but economics doesn't play a hundred percent into it, everybody knows that, but you can't give up everything that we've worked to get just, uh, just to turn it for, for a time being, which you, we, we don't have a crystal ball, we don't know what it's gonna be like down the road. I mean, when you look at what you have in front of you, and we were working with less then, a lot less. There, there wasn't any chance of us doing anything different, there wasn't, Mount Auburn school was in very good shape when it was there, it was too far out, not enough population, you had to close that. At, at one time, probably Mount Auburn and Stonington were the two best schools in the district and we couldn't, we couldn't utilize either one of them. It's, it has to be logistics in it too. And I know what you're talking about taxes, and a lot of the taxes, the majority of the taxes come from the country. But I'm guaranteeing you, there's a lot of people that own ground in Christian County, that own tax, that own ground in other school districts. I pay more in Edinburgh School District than I do in Stonington, I have no say whatsoever, I don't get to vote, I don't get to do anything for those taxes. So, it's a, it's just a, a bad deal, but that's the cards you're dealt, you play them. So, no matter what we do, everybody's not gonna be happy.
Oh, sure, you're not gonna make everybody happy.
I mean, and, and, and we've learned that from a lot of the things we've done, we've had a lot of people mad at us, a lot of people threaten you. But, but you gotta look at what you can afford and what you can afford to do for the kids. Because sometimes to make parents happy isn't the best for the kids. I mean, we got, there's a lot of things we gotta look at, but.
But I, I agree with you, Steve, that I, I would like to get to a K through five at some point. Now, we'll talk K through four, you know, tonight, but when I look at it, still the two best buildings right now are, for elementary setting, are North and Stonington, Memorial, we can't fit them in two buildings. But if we wanna go to a K through four system and not wait two, three, four years down the road, which, I'm one of those, I'm not a proponent of the one K through four, K through five going at where, where it is, I don't like it. I just, I don't like it, I, I mean, the board made, I wouldn't put the North gym there, I mean, but that, I wasn't on the board at the time. I, I don't think that's the place to put a, if it comes to a K through five, K through four down the road, I don't think that's where it needs to be. I just, I don't like the location, I don't, it's, it's efficient, but I don't like the location. I just, it doesn't give me a good feeling.
So, where would you put it?
I'd put it, I'd put it north, north of the high school. I'd put it, if you're.
If it can be worked within, I mean.
Right, you would do, just like the North Gym.
We were gonna put a gym on the junior high also, who didn't have enough money to do both.
What, what did the North Gym cost? What did the North Gym cost, total cost?
The whole project with everything else, twelve million. Yeah, but the, and we spent almost seven million on the air conditioning line, so we spent five, a little over five million on that.
But I, I don't think that added, you know, for the kids, I, I mean, that's past, we, I can't change that, I wasn't on board. But moving forward, that's, I just don't see a K through five campus on Bidwell Street there. You can close down the streets, you can do anything you want, but I think if you're talking about down the road, I don't think that's the location.
So, you would close North?
Eventually.
I would figure, I would figure something out, but I would move, if, if you're gonna move that direction.
So, what, you know, you'd have to close North, right? If you built a brand-new building, right?
That's, I wouldn't have built the gym, so.
Well, gym was built, and I'll give you a little history on the gym, okay? Our elementary kids had no gym at North Elementary.
In Clement Weather, they had nowhere to go.
We now share that gym for PE with the junior high.
Which we also need.
Which we also need.
Sure.
When we moved fifth grade.
And that's where I would, would, would.
You know, but.
What were you gonna do with the kids in North that were playing on the ring?
Well, you've got the same thing at Memorial, and we just moved another class.
So, but the decision was made.
No, I'm not going back, but I'm just saying, moving forward, moving forward, you're, you're talking about not going back, I'm not going back, I'm saying, moving forward, that's where I'm looking. I can't change that that was built, I can't change that we spent that money there. I would have rather put it into the facilities that were over our kids.
You would have abandoned North.
To build a new K five, you'd abandon North. What would you put in North?
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm saying moving forward.
If you built a new K five out on the forty-eighths, right?
Yeah, if we did that in fifteen years, maybe we haven't.
You, you abandoned North.
In fifteen years, I, I'll take a look at it.
No, I'm just. You'd be abandoning all of them.
What's happening?
I said, if you were gonna build a new building and you'd have to build the center, I mean, you'd have one K through five there on the forty.
What I like is, I like K through five.
Even if it was K through five, it would have shut all the other buildings out.
So, when I look at the education, I want a K through five. I want a K through five for kids. I don't like, I would rather we didn't have to use Memorial, but we do right now.
But with the plan that Steve had talked about earlier, if you put the addition on the North, you won't use Memorial for that. You'll have your playground, you'll have your gym, you'll have everybody.
I don't like the location.
See, that's, that's, and, and that's what I'm saying, is that.
There's never a perfect, don't agree on the law.
We're not having, we're not in a perfect world.
I live it every day, too.
No, but I'm saying, North is there already, we can't just pretend like it's not there.
No, and when you have your, and when you have your assets, I think you keep your assets up, you know?
Wouldn't have.
What you have assets, pardon.
They didn't have the money to keep all the assets up, that was the problem.
Well, there's a priority on spending that go there. So, I just think.
At the point where the spending was, Steve, I'll tell you this right now, there was, there was, we were this close to handing the keys over to the state. And I'm sure as hell nobody in this room wants the state to run our school system here in Taylorville. That's how close it was. There was a lot of head scratching, a lot of hours to get us through that to where we are today. And now we're flourishing, which is great.
I just wanna K through five and look forward to. No, I'm not spending all the money, I'm just saying, if we look forward to a K through five and figure this all out, moving forward, I think we need to go to a K through five. And I don't, I don't wanna wait three, four years to do it. That's just where I am. I, we passed a referendum, and curriculum, yes, but we passed a referendum for stability in this district as far as the kids, as far as, when, when my kids were in school, the elementary was as good as junior high or the, or high school. I feel like the elementary is lacking now when you go to the centers.
I, I think your vision of your K through fives is okay, Steve, but what's gonna happen is, if you do go to a K five, it's gonna be a K five at North. Everything will be K five there if you go to a K five, because of the fact that you can't handle it at Memorial, that it can't handle anymore. And to, to build it, to modernize it, would be cheaper to build on the North than it is to retrofit, don't.
Cheaper.
So, I, I mean, we don't know where our money's gonna be down the road ten or fifteen years, but at this point, with the money we have, if you were gonna do that, you'd have to put it in one spot.
And, but I see, if we're gonna do it, if enrollments, I see Edinburgh, I see, I see surrounding towns, you know, coming to that K through five.
You know, for ten years, we've been trying to get surrounding towns, I'm just saying, they're, they're as adamant about staying where they are as everybody else. I mean, whether it's costing them a ton of money to do it, they're thanked. And, and, you know, we've even offered them just, uh, tuition kids in and not close their schools, they won't even do that. So, if they're so, to the point. Yeah, we asked just for the high school, just tuition high school. You know, if, if, if they're so adamant not to bring them here, they're not gonna come to a center either, unless the state mandates it, which could happen with as bad a shape as the state's still in. They could say, well, here's our number of dollars, we're gonna have everybody go to school in Payna and Taylorville, and that's your choices for the county.
Cross circles, that's what Indiana did.
Yeah. And now they have money and we don't. Well, there is, I'm just saying, they're always doing, but, I'm just saying, you're never gonna get it a hundred percent right. I'd like to get it ninety-five percent right, but, but we're not gonna get it a hundred percent right. And when you're trying to think five, ten years down the road, it's even harder because you make, you make assumptions.
Well, I'm taking ten, I'm taking ten, fifteen years down the road, is that.
You make assumptions on funds that are coming and, and they can change, just like this year. You know, we, luckily, we had a good change, but if we didn't have the two payments coming in on the funding bill, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about this at all. You know, because we were showing millions in debt, next year, we'd have been closing things and cramming everybody into one space without even having any money. So, I.
Well, I think, I still think we should move forward with, with, for the next year of looking at the K through five, or, I'm sorry, K through four for the entire district and figuring out a way to make it happen.
It sounds like transportation isn't the issue, Dr. First now saying buses are running anyway.
I mean, we've already got buses there, the, the only transportation issue is how long kids would be on buses if you reroute some kids, you know, to make it. And if you go to the K four district, redrawn the boundaries, they're there, and going back to having families having kids. And you talk about, I mean, you talked about it's a stability, oh, it's a less move. Well, if you live near those boundaries, you could move every year. Your kids could go to two different schools, that, you know, this year they could go to Stonington, next year they could go to North, this year they could go to Stonington, and this year they could, because they're right on the line.
Why, why can't more kids go to North now? I mean, I know it's boundaries and roads, but.
We have to move the lines.
The trouble is with the center part of that map, Steve, you can't, you can't move a whole road.
No, I get that, but golly, and the state, computers and, I, I mean, I appreciate the hard work and everything, but. No, I get that, but golly, in this day, computers and, I, I mean, I appreciate the hard work and everything, but golly, I...
Here, here's the problem, how would you like to live a block from Memorial and have to go to North?
I would love to.
Or have to go to Stonington.
I would love to.
Well, there was your parents that were history. Or here's another point, so let's, so let's say you, okay, I'll give you another friend since we looked at. So if the enrollments continue to drop, how'd you like to live right across from North, and your kid catches a bus to Stonington? Would you like that?
For the reverse.
I, you know what I'm saying, I'm just saying, for every, for every way you look at these boundaries, there's not an easy way of doing this, you know?
And again, you're not gonna please everybody.
And you're not gonna please everybody.
I'm just trying to go to a K through five and figure out a way to do that. I don't like the centers. The, I know it's a lot of...
What is your grounds, though? I mean, I...
I know you like the center.
I mean, we discussed this years ago, and you show the research, and there's now, there's... Research that shows K through fives are good, there's research shows centers are good, you can offset that all the way, and even, even if it comes to a draw, then you're at a draw, and are you gonna spend all that money to be at a draw?
Who's, who's kid, when my kids are in school, who, who's the kids' role models now? When my kids were in school, when they're in kindergarten, they had fifth grade assembly, the fifth graders getting the awards, those were their role models, okay? That's who they looked up to, they, there was so much transition going on, they don't have that. The private schools have stayed with the K through five, probably for necessary reasons, but it's worked. This model, this is primary education, this isn't junior high education, this isn't high school. I also like the continuity, I like the continuity of those teachers, K through five, having those kids, and continuity with the kids and with the parents, it builds, it builds stability for those kids.
But there's another side to that too, Steve. Those teachers, and, and I'm not saying this, 'cause I, I'm, I'm not going either direction, I'm just saying about your research, about your findings there, the stability.
No, they said my findings, this is what I've lived.
Okay, the same thing, though, is, is that teacher makes their mind up about a kid down here...
No.
Oh, that happens a hell of a lot, and, and that kid hasn't given a fair shot.
The other way doesn't happen, but I see teachers...
You put them in a, you put them in a center, and those teachers have all those kids...
I saw teachers take kids...
You don't have to go to that one teacher.
I saw teachers watch kids from K and take them and know those kids. Teachers, you're gonna find bad teachers, but most of them are there because they're about that kid.
I think they're district head's teachers.
Right, but you can, you can cite that kid where he's, he, he blows him off, but I can cite twenty other teachers that say, that kid, he's got a rough home life, but he, he's, he's a good kid. And that continuity can't happen in a center. It can't, there's too many transitions, it's just the way it is.
One of the things that we've done...
There's more parental involvement, one thing we, we lack is parental involvement, that, you know, terrible parental involvement, and it's probably only gonna get worse. With, with a K through five, at least there's a chance to break, get more parental involvement.
You're right.
There's a chance.
But the part of the problem that we're looking at right now is that not just parental involvement, one of the things that we've addressed is the way that we've changed our department heads and the counselors, and working back and forth between the schools, 'cause we saw this problem of kids getting lost, not being up to speed. But we've changed that curriculum, we've approached that, we've got kids going over to the high school early to get involved with that, we've taken freshmen, we've invested more time in the freshmen this year than I think they've ever had, taking them places they finally get tired of writing the bus groups. But we're doing that, we're also working on trying to keep, it's what the new reading programs are all about, and those things, and keeping a continuity and working with the department heads to see that we get through the entire course structure, so we don't leave a session off, and we get through it early enough to evaluate what kids need to go back and need help, and the kids that are, have completed get extended training and more challenges, rather than sitting there tutoring the other kids. So we've made those changes, yeah, is it ideal? It's a lot better than it was, and as we move forward, I'm sorry, but I, I came from the fossil division at Edison School, more like the redheaded stepchild, they kept taking money from us and throwing it in the nukes, so we had to learn to do more with less. See, you've got what you got, and you gotta figure out how to do that, and that's kinda how we are right now. I think a lot of people forget, they're looking, they say, why'd you do that, why'd you do this, why'd you do that, I wouldn't have done that. Well, in a perfect world, you wouldn't have done that. But if you only got two quarters, and the perfect world calls for a dollar, you're gonna have to figure out how to survive. And that's what they've done, matter of fact, they did better than that, because now they got four quarters. And I think we have to, I think if we stay steady to the course, we're gonna get there. It may not be as fast as everybody wants, but I will guarantee you, when we get there, it's gonna be high quality. That's my goal, is to make sure we make these steps, and we make the steps correctly, that we come in with a high-quality program when we commit. I think, I'd just...
And that's what I'm trying to do, but I think we start with primary grades and we go K through four. I don't think we wait three, four, and plan in the future, if we have the goal to get there, I think we can, I don't want, I don't want to wait.
I just don't have the money to buy the ticket to leave Mark.
Well, if the building committees can sit down, or the whole committee as a whole, and figure out how to move forward on this, and not do it all at one year, I'd like to see how to do it. I'd like to sit down, have a, have a summary here. But I, that's the direction I would like to move, is to go the district to a K through...
I, I understand, because everybody's got different feelings on it, but being on the board as long as I have, we've been through a number, more than once, and you, you come out with the same thing at the end, where you're still gonna do what's cost-effective. And, you know, maybe down the road, the district will have money, and you can change things different ways, but right now, the first, first year you're gonna have money, you can't go out and throw it at a project and then...
That's not what I'm thinking, I, I, I mean, it's not the first year you have money, it's when we pass the referendum, and the sales tax...
The referendum, when it doesn't even come into effect.
We want to, we want to...
But we haven't got the money yet.
We want to go what we think is, or what I think is a good school system. I think that's, it's the best school system there is.
And that's your opinion, there are arguments on both sides.
There are, but when you look at schools that want to...
The board and the administration made that decision years ago, and you, does one board member wanna flip it up?
And that's okay too, that's part of us, of us being on the board.
Yeah.
And, and, and you're gonna see school districts that are neighborhood schools go into centers, or you're gonna see some, you, districts that are centers go into neighborhood schools? 'Cause nobody's got it all figured out yet. So, I mean, we're, we're just gotta get to the point.
Enrollments was a big issue over the years, and also just the number of buildings we had and the number of students, and as enrollments declined, that's really what drove the, the closing of the buildings, that price...
And really no uptick in numbers on the horizon. I mean, we're still gonna be getting...
No, I can see us getting down to two K through four schools in the interim, if, if that is our end goal.
Other discussions? I think we need to have motions.
I, I move, we move towards a K through four system, district wide, and start working at, making it happen for the next school year.
Is there a second for that motion?
Say that again, Steve.
I move, I, I move that we go, the entire district goes to a K through four, or the or eight to nineteen, for the next, the school year after nineteen twenty-one.
Three buildings, right.
And work towards that goal. I mean, I think eventually Memorial might come offline for a K through four, but we can, we can figure that out down the line, but I think the K through four is what... I, I just, I think, I, I don't have a question, more, we talked about this in January, and I'm more a proponent of it, the more I think about it, as opposed to the centers, and we've got a district that, if, if other districts can do it, we can figure it out too.
Do I have a second?
For a K through four, utilize the three buildings for nineteen twenty, correct?
That's, that's my motion.
That's what his motion is. You have a second, huh? Okay. You brought to the report hall.
Mr. Curtin?
Yes.
Mrs. Eber?
Yes.
Mrs. Marburger?
Yes.
Mrs. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Milli?
No.
Mr. Turner?
No.
Mr. Andrew?
No.
Motion carries four, three.
So the board will need to draft a letter for parents. That, I want a board member's signature on this too, in terms of redistricting this district, okay?
And then we gotta figure out how to move funds.
We'll figure out your transportation routes, and then I will have those letters available to parents at registration.
For the nineteen twenties.
For the nineteen twenty, because there may be parents that wanna move now, okay, in terms of that.
And we gotta figure out how to get them to move here, correct?
I think we need to have a building heard, I think.
This thirteen million, that's tiny.
Yeah.
You're talking up to thirteen million. But you don't have...
We don't have...
To make it feasible for the centers, so, in the next two years, we have to move it.
And you don't have any borrowing capacity until twenty-one.
And we have building committees where we don't learn at, you know, board meetings about immediate needs as projects, so it helps us.
We have them all year.
I have a building committee meeting in a year.
Were you here when we toured all the buildings? It's less than a year ago.
That was a year ago.
And that's, that was a building meeting, that's where you looked at things and saw what was falling apart, what is immediate tension.
Well, I asked if there were any immediate needs in Stonington, and I was still didn't know.
That's not true.
Wait a minute.
The boiler was there.
The boiler, but not for...
The boiler was not true, the boiler and the roof.
No, the roof wasn't...
Yes, boiler was there, and you saw the...
I saw the boiler, but not the roof.
That's correct.
Boiler, I didn't handle, the roof, it wasn't... I just like to know those things so you can plan ahead. I think if we have a building committee, you know, it's...
Yeah, we'll bring the architect, because you're gonna have, we'll bring the architect, because they're gonna act in the engineers.
In fact, do you think there are committees, 'cause I've never seen them.
Yeah, there's committees, I don't think that, you were reassigned when you came on, 'cause all the committees were already made for the year.
Okay, I'm just curious, 'cause I've never seen anything.
I'd also like to see the west end of Stonington addressed, as far as what, if we have different options there.
In terms of what? I'm just asking a question, in terms of what?
So I, I just...
Yeah, as far as different options we have, whether we have housing into there, or whether we house them someplace else.
And then I'll, Mr. Andrew, then, since we have registration coming, I'm going to have to draft that letter, so, to those parents at the lake.
For this year, for next?
For next year, but I'm going to inform them now, because we had people move, and then knowing that, those boundaries next summer. And I would invite the board to come into those discussions in terms of how that works, so that you have an understanding of how boundaries are. Matter of fact, I'd like to have a work session with you, and we'll break down all of this by hand. So you can see where these kids live, by hand, and then have to make those phone calls to those parents. And then we'll need to advertise for all of those positions next year, you, that meant the two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars, correct? Just so I know that that's the staff, right? Is that part of that motion?
I wanna make sure on the staffing that's where we're at, because I, as a nurses, I didn't think we had two full-time nurses, and I'm looking at three time, three full-time nurses, if that's actually necessary. Because if the faces kids that are up in St. Ignatius require a full-time nurse, you're saying an influx of however many students, but there will be enough needs then to qualify for...
There could be diabetic children.
Sure, there could be, but that doesn't mean they can't be managed by a part-time nurse, not a full-time nurse.
We're gonna have trouble finding a full-time nurse, paid by a little one part-time nurse.
Well, I know some nurses, we're in positions that, that, you know, would like to live a school position, that have school nurses in the divisions.
How we advertised, evidently, they didn't apply.
Yeah.
And you'd be putting up full-time...
Well, I'm just asking, as we plan for this, you know, as, as we...
If you're gonna do it, you have to have it out there for the number section.
All right.
Superintendent of the court.
Yeah.
Put it down to rest, please.
It's gonna take a minute.
So you say, so you say, I'll listen to you.
I don't have to go, so please...
Yeah, no kidding, thanks, Dan.
Um, there's, um, the, um, boiler works coming, um, well at Taylorville High School. Um, they hope to get that enclosed here soon. Um, a report on the mid-state special education, the district is still going through the procedures to withdraw, we're going to be, begin writing our plans uh, later this month, and, uh, then present it to the ISB in April.
Do you think it will go next, sooner?
I don't know, now, by going to three different buildings, gonna change the synopsis, because we're gonna require more staffing, so now I'm going to have to sit back and go through that, right? So we're gonna have to recalculate this, and it may not be cost-effective to make that move now. In, in terms of that, we wanna have the housing, in terms of moving that, that situation, so... Um, and, um, the turf project's coming along quite nicely, turf will arrive next week, um, correct, Mr. Hutchison?
Correct.
And, uh, we'll, we'll go from there, so...
Pretty much on schedule with that?
Pretty much on schedule with that, and that's all I have at this point. The ESU report we'll give next month, because the ISB didn't release the final, final documentation.
Okay, we're having a little bit of a journey, I have a second, but...